To the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, January 11th, 2018, already in progress. We've been having technical difficulties. We are now being recorded and broadcast, we hope, on WACA. Hopefully, the technical difficulties are resolved. The screen in here looks like it's getting a little bit of interference. I hope that's all right. Hope that's just our local TV having problems. Anyway, before the technical difficulties were resolved, we dealt with one issue, which was an open meeting law complaint where we voted unanimously to send the letter as drafted by Town Council as the planning board's response. The issue was that somebody believed the doors were locked because the red light was on, which is the automatic door locking system. However, the doors were actually unlocked because there's a manual override that allows the doors to be mechanically unlocked, and as such, the doors were not locked, and that is the gist of the response that we are sending back to the Attorney General. Also on the agenda tonight, we have a continued public hearing on subdivision Zero Brogdon Road. This is the two-lot extension to Brogdon Road we've been talking about. We have, which I believe is being continued, Seventy-three Olive Street, subdivision that's been in the discussion for quite a long time. We have a site plan review modification for Eighty-one West Union Street. We have an approval not required. Or is that?
That's off.
Okay, that's off.
Yeah, it's not ready.
We have a bond reduction for Signature Estates Two and some other administrative and member reports issues. With that said, let's now proceed with the continued public hearing on the subdivision known as Zero Brogdon Road. Yes?
For the record, Rob Truax of GLM Engineering Consultants. Since our last hearing, some of the things we've done is we revised the plan per the comments of GCG Associates, and we submitted those prior to Christmas, before the holiday. There is a second review out, which I believe you folks have a copy of, but we received this week. And also, since that time, we've been before the Conservation Commission for two hearings. They voted to approve and issued an order of condition at their last hearing, which was this week. So the project's been approved by Conservation with an order of conditions waiting for the appeal period. What we did do, and just some things that we added to the plan, were we requested three additional waivers since the original submittal, and those were just things that came up during the discussion and the review, and I can just go through those quickly. Well, look, there's four in total. Why don't I just go recap all four of them? So the first one is we're requesting a waiver for the cul-de-sac with no center island. The second one we've now asked for is we're requesting a waiver for the pavement width reduced from twenty-six feet to twenty-two feet, and this would match up to the existing pavement width that's on Brogdon Road that's currently constructed. The third one is we're asking for the pavement thickness, which we're asking for the one-and-a-half top and a two-and-a-half binder instead of the two, one, and one, which would be three courses that we have to put down.
Is that the state standard instead of the town standard?
Correct. That's the state standard. And then the fourth one is we're asking to allow the roadway to be constructed with a Cape Cod berm throughout, except vertical roundings. We would have granite curbing. The requirement is that if you exceed six percent or greater for the road slope, you have to go to granite curb. The road's at six percent coming down from the top of the curve. It's a short, it's a short street, not a long street, and we're requesting a waiver to have it be Cape Cod berm around the cul-de-sac. So those have been added to the plan.
That's around the cul-de-sac, but the portion that's the road would still be granite, or not?
No, the port, there's only a short portion. It would be, it would match up to the Cape Cod berm that's on Brogdon. Brogdon is Cape Cod berm now, so it would match up to the Cape Cod berm that's there on that short piece.
For people watching at home who aren't familiar with the term Cape Cod berm is essentially an asphalt curve.
Correct. So we have seen these comments. I don't feel there's any major issues in here. One issue that I think we need to talk about tonight, and Sheila is going to bring it up as well, is I believe there's, there was a letter from Steve Hickey, who's the owner of Brogdon Roads Project, and those roads have not been accepted as of today. The plans they wrote as bills, I believe, have been submitted. Sheila has them in her possession. It's my understanding they're going to try and get the roads accepted at the next town meeting, which is the Springtown meeting, and they're going out for review. They're going to have peer review done. DPW's looked at them, but there's still some comments. So speaking with Sheila today, we had an email that went out today from Sheila, and I called her, and the issue is that the board is, our understanding, what Sheila's told us and what she's been told, is this board can't vote to approve the project while we don't have permission to use the roads technically. We don't have an easement, and we don't have the rights. It's still a private road until it's accepted, and we don't have a written easement or anything from Mr. Hickey to use the road. As a matter of fact, you have a letter saying just the opposite, that we would not be allowed to tie into utilities, et cetera, until such time that the road is accepted. We didn't know that was an issue when we submitted the plan. Just from our standpoint, we thought it was something we'd have to deal with, that if the board did approve it, it would be on, the ownership would be on us, that we couldn't build it till we got the road accepted or we got permission to use the roads, and that would be our burden, not yours. So with that said, I don't, we don't, we don't want to, I mean, it was talked about what we should do going forward, whether we withdraw, we continue, whatever, until the road's accepted. We definitely don't want to withdraw at this time. We don't want to withdraw tonight, anyway. We'd like to at least continue tonight's hearing for, say, four weeks so that we can get another opinion from council of our own and see where we stand with that, and maybe talk to Mr. Hickey. I believe Sheila can speak more on this when I'm done talking here, but that, that's kind of a bit of an issue right now, obviously. So what we don't want to, we don't want to withdraw or do anything. We don't want to, we want to give ourselves some time. This just got thrown at us today. So we're, we'd like to get, maybe get our own council to take a look at it and see what they think. I mean, on the surface, to me, it just looks like if you approved it, then the ownership would be on us to get in there, and if we can't get in there, then we have a subdivision with two lots we can't build. That's kind of the way we always thought about it, but.
Honestly, that, that had been my assumption, but I'm not a lawyer.
I'm not either.
And I don't even play one on TV.
Yeah, I'm not either, and I, it's, you know, it just, this just came up. So maybe you can speak a little on it, Sheila, or what you.
So my, having heard from what I've heard from Town Council, unless we hear something different, my inclination would be to go with, with that advice and not, at least not vote on this until that is resolved. If this is accepted at Spring, if Brogdon Road is accepted at Springtown Meeting, then we could go ahead with this at that point. If, for some reason, it's pushed out a lot longer than that, then withdrawing and resubmitting might be a better option, especially if we might, you know, if for some reason it's going to wait through another winter, certainly, you know, because at some point, you know, the planning board membership changes and it just.
Correct. Yeah, I would hope that it gets approved at town meeting. I know it's in the works to do that now, so.
Looking at our next agenda item, being a subdivision that's been booted along for over a year now, you know, this, that's not something we want to see happening in general. It's better to withdraw and resubmit.
I'd like to, I think if we were to continue for at least four weeks, that would give us time to get our, get another opinion from council, and then if we get a different one or the same, if we get the same one, obviously, we're, you know, it is what it is, and that's what we've got to deal with. But if we get a different one, then maybe the two councils can talk, and we can come to some agreement. I don't know. I've never run into this before, to be honest. I've never, all my years doing this, I've never crossed this.
I believe in an email I saw from staff, there was the suggestion that we could allow you to withdraw without prejudice.
Yep.
And, and also vote to waive any duplicate fees if you resubmit within a certain time period, like twelve months or eighteen months or something like that. I would be amenable to that. I don't, you know, I see some nodding from other board members. I mean, that seems like a reasonable thing if that's the approach that ends out being taken. I don't want to push you at this point.
Yeah, we don't want to go, that may be the right route we go. That may be the route that we have to take, and, but having that just, you know, tonight hearing it for the first time, and just want to take some time to digest it and get some opinions, and, you know, we'll come back in four weeks, and if it's, if it is, if that's what it is and everyone agrees to that, then we'll probably, then we'll rehash and figure out how to go from there.
Yeah. And we are down one member tonight. He's, he's stuck in traffic, apparently. There was a bad accident on the Pike. He commutes in from Boston, unfortunately, so. But we could, tonight, talk about any of the other issues, or we could just continue and postpone those until this is resolved. I mean, clearly, you can't start construct, without permission from Hickey at this point.
We couldn't start.
You couldn't start doing anything until after May, anyway.
We knew that, and we were comfortable with that, getting the approval and sitting on it till we could go in there and do the work, and that was fine with us. That was fine with John and Joe, and that was their understanding that that's the way it would work. Originally, though, I will say that they thought they were going to be able to work out an agreement to get permission, to get access during this process, and that didn't go that way. It went the other, so.
It's unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, you know, but I understand both sides. I mean, it's what it is, and.
Yeah, I would assume he's concerned about anything that would delay the road acceptance, and he's afraid of there's construction.
Or damages to the road, and, right.
So I can see where he's coming from on that.
I, yeah, I can see both sides, but, yep. And that's kind of, you know, where we're at. Anything else, John, you can make up to add to that, Joe?
Can you speak at the microphone thing?
Now that it's really working.
John Mataris Jr., owner, one of the owners of Zero Brogdon Road. As Rob just stated, I mean, we were, we had been operating under the assumption that, you know, we, we knew that we weren't getting in there till the roads were turned over. That was, we, it is what it is. I guess we were hopeful to try and complete as much as we possibly could ahead of time, meaning get our approvals from planning and the town, so that if, you know, if and when the roads do get turned over, we were able to start as quickly as possible. If council deems that's not possible, then so be it. We'll jump through that hoop as well when time comes, but if it's possible to figure out a different way, different avenue to, just for us to get approval and be able to start as quickly as possible, then wonderful. But again, we, I had a thirty-second conversation with Rob about it, and, you know, we're here, so we just haven't had any time to really develop any sort of rebuttal towards.
If at some point we get legal advice that we're satisfied with, meaning probably from our own Town Council, that says that it's all right for us to make a decision on this where the approval has a condition that you show that you have access prior to doing any construction on this, you know, I'd be amenable to that, but that's exactly the opposite of the advice that we have at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should just continue. If there's any, if there's any issues in this letter that you wanted to discuss, we can discuss them. I don't see anything earth-shattering in here that we can't just probably try and hash out between now and wherever the time is.
Yeah, I think that the issues on this project are fairly small.
Correct.
You know, the issues with the waivers, we'll have to discuss with the board based on the cul-de-sac because, you know, the other cul-de-sacks in the surrounding area do have the island, and, yeah, so there's, I don't know what people are going to say. But, you know, the pavement width should be easy because generally, you want to match the road you're hooking up to.
It's a very short length of road we're building.
Yeah.
You edge of that one to the next one, so.
I know there's interest in putting the Upper Charles Trail through the back of the property, if at all possible, and.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of a separate thing from, and they're willing to talk every, people will talk that till.
So.
In the future and now or whenever.
It would be nice to get the easement as part of this, just so it's all nailed down.
But it could come at any time. It doesn't need to be. I mean, the easement could be granted at any point in time.
True, true.
Yeah. I mean, personally, like, when we were speaking, we didn't want one to influence the other, to be honest. That was our thought.
I can understand that, so.
Schedule the question. The continuance, can the continuance only be four weeks?
You can continue.
Can it go longer?
People are asking about how long to continue this for. I don't believe there's any specific time limits. We would want a, an extension on the time to consider it.
Correct.
To several, like, a week or two past that continuance, which would give us time for any filings, and actually, in this case, I don't think we'd wrap it up at the next one, so we'd probably want.
You must be close to time now, Sheila.
I think so. I don't know offhand what the time is.
So, so if we're going to.
So why don't we just grant that tonight? Do you have a form, or do you want us?
You can handwrite a letter.
Handwritten thing. So if we're going to continue this to, say, do we have the second?
Yeah, we have February eighth or March eighth. This is vacation week.
Oh, yeah. Let's continue this to March eighth.
Okay.
And if we could have a.
We'll go to March thirtieth with the extension.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, perfect.
Do you know when the town approvals are due to be finalized?
I don't.
I don't know.
It's the selectman vote on that, so it's really.
Happen in February?
That's a little early.
No, it's, it's generally six weeks before town meeting.
Probably end of March.
What's the date today?
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, we're looking at.
March eighth for the continuance.
Is there a motion to accept the continuance on the deadline to consider this subdivision to March thirtieth?
So moved, seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero one. Who made the motion? Was that?
Now, see, now, it's all the same.
March thirtieth or March eighth?
March thirtieth is the, is now the deadline for the planning board to make a decision unless that gets extended again, because we have limits for how long the planning board can consider a given project. And then the, if the applicant agrees to extend, which he's giving us a handwritten letter to do so, we can extend those deadlines. Then we, and then we continue the hearing to an earlier date, which would give us time to file a decision if we wanted, if needed to, so. So the question is, what else do we have on the agenda for March eighth?
At the moment, we have nothing.
So let's put this at seven fifteen.
All right.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing to seven fifteen on March eighth?
So moved, seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Obstand.
That passes three zero one.
All right, so we are done with this item for tonight. Thank you very much.
Do you have to vote this letter? Do you have to vote this extension? Do you already do that?
We voted the extension first.
Oh, okay.
You just need to, just. Oh, yeah. Sheila pointed out that this is a public hearing, so we do need to take public comment on this before the, before we can close the public hearing for tonight. Is there any public comment on the Zero Brogdon Road subdivision for tonight?
I would for Brogdon.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Not seeing any. The hearing is now closed for tonight and continued as voted to March eighth at seven fifteen. Thank you, Sheila. Our next item is scheduled at seven thirty for Seventy-three Olive Street. This is a continued, very continued subdivision hearing, and I believe they are continuing again?
Yes, and I'm not, yes, and we've actually, I've actually asked them, per Town Council, to reapply because the makeup of the board is different now from when they first opened the hearing. So we're going to reapply. They're going to resubmit all the prior testimony, so then we can kind of start again. So I've asked them for a summary of what's transpired up until now, and a sort of a timeline of what they need going forward.
Okay, so, but at this point, they haven't necessarily agreed to that?
They have agreed. The engineer's ill.
To resubmit?
Yes, they have, and, but I did not receive, so I was expecting something.
But we haven't received a withdrawal, so we need to continue this.
Right, so let's, yeah, yeah. And we have an extension to the end of February for a decision with them.
Okay.
So we could continue to.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any specific comments on Seventy-three Olive Street, since it was posted, I will accept those tonight. Seeing none, is there a motion to continue this to, let's do February eighth.
Okay.
Because we're hoping they're going to withdraw it and make it moved.
Right.
Let's just do this at seven fifteen and just get it over with, because it should be short, even if there's something else. So, is there a motion, continue this till seven fifteen on February eighth?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That passes four zero. All right, our next item, scheduled for seven forty-five.
Didn't have to close that, did we?
No, it's a continuing.
Oh, we vote to close the other hearing sometimes.
No, we're not closing. I, I just.
The hearing, I mean?
No, we're, we're.
Okay, I'm just.
We're just continuing it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But you said it was, anyone had any comments?
I did ask. Nobody indicated.
So we don't have to officially close that or anything?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we're good. Okay, yeah. Seven forty-five, Eighty-one West Union Street Site Plan Modification. The applicant, for Eighty-one West Union LLC proposes a modification to the approved January twelfth, twenty seventeen site plan to prepare the land and allow stockpiling beyond the originally approved limit of work. Is the applicant here? Would you like to introduce yourself for the record and tell us what changes you're trying to make to the site plan?
Good evening. My name is Bill Rodenheiser, and I'm representing Eighty-one West Union Street LLC. Thanks for hearing me tonight. The proposed change that you see in front of you, I think you all have your copy of the plans, with the inception of this, there was, to be honest with you, some engineering, I was probably should have counted for this expanded area because in the current configuration, the way that it is, all the dirt excavated will not fit directly adjacent within the currently installed erosion controls and approved and signed off by ConCom. So the first part of this process was obviously to get in communication with Conservation, explain to them what we were trying to do, which is instead of taking all the dirt, hauling it off the site, and then bringing it back, we'll do additional phasing, and then also some of the materials we'll be using for this site, particularly the loom for all the extensive plantings that are on the originally approved plans. We realized we just weren't going to have enough area. So we requested this expansion through Conservation, obviously knowing that was going to be quite a sensitive issue with the wetlands. They asked us to add a number of additional measures, including the bowlers that you see there at the lower area, to make sure that there was absolutely no chance of anything getting into the wetland. They wanted the markers, the twenty-five-foot buffer markers permanently installed. I was happy enough to lug those forty concrete bounds out into the woods myself, dug them in, installed them, and put the Conservation's placard on them. And so we went through the process. Unfortunately, it's pretty clear from some events of today that despite the fact that the notification went, you know, to the Conservation, apparently, some of the butters were not noticed. So it's great that they're going to be here tonight and that they wish to speak their piece, but I think we may have to do, you know, some of that again. Just very unfortunate, but, you know, obviously, the folks in the adjacent homes need to be heard. So we're prepared to do that, but still wanted to get feedback from this board as it relates to the overall intention, which is basically to stockpile materials in, in the area that you see defined, quite a bit of which is very, very low. So in terms of the trajectory or what might be visible, it can be spread over a larger area, and I shouldn't, shouldn't really be too much of a concern that way. I don't know if you have any other questions.
So I, I'm looking at this map here that shows essentially you're clearing pretty much all the non-wetlands on the lot to use for storage.
Like every single tree, like every single piece of vegetation?
Well, there's, there's a lot of dead trees. As a matter of fact, there's some, actually some really, really enormous trees that have tipped over and kind of are a little bit of a hazard. Some of the larger stock that's adjacent to the lot line that's going to be able to be incorporated into landscaping, no, we're not going to take that stuff down. And I imagine that it would be reasonable to leave some sort of a buffer, obviously, because the neighbors are, until the final intention is completed and we come back in front of this board for the phase two, there's no need to really take everything because it just, it's not relevant to use all that space. So I'm certainly willing to do work with the neighbors and whatever they choose.
When is that phase two coming about?
Phase two's not, there's no approved plan for phase two yet.
There's also, it's also a zoning issue, because it's been pointed out that the frontage requirement, when you have multiple uses on the same lot, you may have to have the frontage for both separately, and there's, there's some conflicting zoning, and that's one of the issues that's been brought up for zoning that's been suggested that we look at, which may impact their ability to, to do something else in a phase two at this point.
So how can we, how can we possibly let you clear it if we don't even know if you're going to use that property?
Currently, we have no idea what's going to be happening on that other property when.
Well, just so you know, we have the current piece that's approved and permitted, ready to go into construction in probably March or April. And within those agreements, it's been worked out that we could provide connecting overhead structures for the similar use that would actually allow us to utilize the property in worst-case scenario. So we're not really too worried about that. So there's the possibility to expand by creating the connectivity of the buildings through, through overhead means, and the building inspectors ruled on that. And also, I think it's pretty clear from other uses in town that are already pre-existing, non-conforming uses permitted since this change in the bylaw came to be, where they don't have the prerequisite hundred and fifty feet per use. A good example, that would be dairy, like, four users, there's not six hundred feet of frontage there. So we're hoping to work through that process. Obviously, it's a process and got to go through it, but in any case, there is the opportunity to use the property by connecting the structures for the one use, worst-case scenario.
And the stockpiling, is that going to be used for the second phase, or just, is it going to move it and then do the first one, and then it's going to be gone?
Well, with the loom, we're going to, there's a lot of landscaping going around where the school side is. We're putting the painting wall, and we're putting plantings all outside. We're going to be doing some stuff adjacent to Mr. and Mrs. Ferris's house, and I imagine we're going to be working something out with this board, and probably the neighbors to do something along the perimeter to protect it. So a lot of those soils. along the perimeter to protect it, so a lot of those soils, I imagine, would be used for that, the loom, but it's, you know...
Saying that, once the first part of this is done, is there just gonna be still a bunch of stockpiled stuff back there?
No, no, because...
So it's gonna be all taken care of before this is done, or when this is done?
I'd like to do that, I plan on doing that, and, and, but, but the, the issue that the chair, the chair has raised is, is, you know, one that has to be worked through. Regardless of that, I think it's only gonna be helpful for me, with the community, with the neighbors, to do something productive with that material.
Because otherwise it sits there for, until you figure out what to do with part two.
Right, well, I'm tied to Concom to fix it, like, I have to manage it.
Yeah.
So it's like cutting runoff, I'm gonna have to put hay on it, I have to seed it, like, there's this whole problem of, like, taking care of it while it just sits there, so that's not really my best interest.
So, what is, what would it, under your request for, for this, this issue, what's the, what's the timeline for the piece of the project that has been approved or has been reviewed, the first phase? What's the timeline of when this material would be stored here, how long? Would, you know, give us a sense of the, the timeline here, what this looks like?
They anticipate sixteen months. I'll have some control over that, I'm gonna be doing the site work for the entire project. But that's what they anticipate from, you know, start of operations to, you know, CO. And if, if the issue that the chair has raised is, you know, gets worked out, I look to begin my permitting on the other side, well, whether it does or doesn't, because we're gonna have to do something, we're gonna wind up continuing what is currently proposed on this side and the other side. And I would look to do that planning, you know, May-June, so that the thing's kind of moving in the same train track.
The concern that I would have with this is, you know, it goes forward, it gets stored, and then this other thing hits, hits, goes sideways in terms of zoning. That stuff can go on and on, and then you got stuff stored here in big piles.
Within the hundred-foot buffer zone.
Yeah, on a slope, that's tipping down into that. I know there's a plan to do a berm here, but, I mean, this is, that's on a down slope towards the wetlands, right?
Yeah, but I'm already approved by Concom, absent the very, very critical comments and the discussion with the neighbors, notwithstanding that, technically has approved everything that we've done.
And then, as far as the trees, you're not just gonna clear it off? You're gonna take out just what you need to put what you need in there for now, on that section?
I'm gonna clear...
Like, are you gonna clear out a strip so you can put all your stuff in there? Or are you just gonna clear everything off preparing for the next project?
I'm probably gonna clear most of what I need to, however, I'm gonna obviously be paying attention to what the neighbors have to say, and going to factor that into what it is that we do at the perimeter, so that, you know, I can make peace and people can be happy with, with what the perimeter looks like. And I think that that's like probably the most important thing of all of what's gonna happen here, because in the end, the adjacent folks need to be able to have something that they're looking at this.
Is there a tree cut plan for this? Like, do we have a... Do we have a map in front, of course, that shows what's allowed to be cleared under the existing plan?
Yes, I think yes.
Yeah, you can get there.
In one of these.
I just wanna, just for comparison.
I think it's like here.
Yes, up there.
I think it's like from, from like here to like, eh, no, actually, I think it's like from here, because this phase, I think it's like this. From like A eleven, maybe?
This, here, this red line is the limit.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And that's in, and signed off, that part there.
Right, this is the existing plan that we're...
I mean, a big spot right here, I mean, a big little spot right here.
Right. I just wanted to see what the existing limit of work line was under the old plan that's already approved.
Got it. So all, so, so this entire section here would be, would be, well, is proposed to be cleared as part of this first phase, and this was not part of the original plan, right?
Correct, that's, that's the request.
Not it.
Having sensitivity, obviously, even a lot more.
It's not a material.
Yeah, so if you go to the second map, you should see this, just to understand it, but, this is, this is the...
It's just a lot of paper to unfold. Yeah. And often we get the shrunk down eleven by seventeen copies, that are a little easier to, but sometimes harder to see everything on.
Well, I know.
And what's worse is after this change, I can't say anything.
I look forward to the day when this is all electronic. Too much paper. Have to cut down a whole bunch of trees to make this...
I know, I know.
So, yeah.
Hey, I mean, right now, for me, this is kind of like informational, so to get your feedback, let...
I, my, my initial response is, this is way too much clearing to, to be justified for simply the site work that needs to be done for building these buildings.
I agree, especially with no plan for this, that part.
Yeah, right in front of the school.
Half the town will go across this parcel like every single day.
And just in general, clearing lands for future unpermitted stuff is not something that we like to see. So it's just, so my, my initial reaction to this is, is very negative. Should I, should we see what the other residents have to say at this point?
Yes.
Before we look forward any further? Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on this? If so, you need to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us whatever you want to tell us.
My name's Tom Ferris, I live at seventy-three West Union Street. I'm the director of butter.
Yep.
And my wife, Sandy, is here also. We've lived there for about fifty years. I, I'm concerned with the clearcutting. And just, I can't figure out why, and I haven't heard from Conservation Commission, so I don't know their logic for whatever they're blowing. Personally, I'd like to see it stay that way until we have a plan.
Yep, me too.
And I don't know what would be stored, and I know the swamp is approximately four acres plus or minus, so it's a large wet area. It's got high bush, blueberries, cranberries, and there's a lot of wildlife out there. As I told, we had three deer in our yard on Sunday. We've had up to twenty-eight turkeys walking through, the feathered type, fox, coyotes. And I saw a fisher cat out there a number of years ago when I was walking my dogs. Claw's that long, I think. My dog and I have stopped going out there. And as an abutter, I'm concerned, because protecting our privacy, and we have grandchildren that come over. And little boys like to kick balls. And, so I'd like to see it, something on paper first. Go to the Conservation Commission and get their logic, because I spent eighteen years on the Ashland Conservation Commission, going on in the early seventies. I think I was one of the second year they headed in town. So I'm a little familiar with the Wetlands Act. What I'd like to see is for my wife and myself, like a twenty-foot buffer around, and approximately sixteen-foot-high spreading use, and a eight-foot-high PVC fence, pretty much in the middle of the buffer zone, which would give the trees good growing space, develop a good root ball. And as I'd like to see this, you know, held up until there's a plan, because I'm concerned with the loss of habitat. And just, there were two trees next door behind the old lean farmhouse that, well, Lord knows how old they were, very tall. Red-winged hawks used to nest in the top of them. They swept down and took squirrels out of my yard. So I would think just hold off until there is a plan, and we can act on it. As I said, having been on Conservation, it's, it's hard anticipating. And I just heard about the zoning situation, so it might be something best to hold back and get all the things in a line. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Emery Bond from fifty-nine West Union Street. I'm just briefly looking at the plans, and listening to the applicant, applicant talk, it sounds like they're gonna be managing material that's on site. I just want a little bit more clarity of if that's truly the case, because in looking at the plans, and I'm not an engineer by any means, it looks like it's a primarily a fill project where the grade would actually need to be brought up. So I'm just more curious if we get more information on what type of material is gonna be stored there, the different types of quantities that are gonna be stored there, mainly if it's all just gonna be generated from the site, and if anything is gonna be imported, you know, if that's regulated import, things of that nature. The other thing on that plan was, there was a, that's different from the approved plan, was there was a relocated house. If we get some more information on if that's the house from the property, if that's another house, because that is different from the approved plan that the board has seen.
I was just gonna ask that same question, thank you. Yeah, if the applicant would like to address, first of all, with the, the house, and then to answer the question on the materials, that would be good.
Yeah, great question. So, the house, after, you know, going through the whole process of getting it approved to back the thing down, right? The consideration, or the, the issue was raised about, you know, saving it because it could possibly be utilized, the main portion of the structure, just kind of like the, the bones of the thing, if you will, for one of the units. So, and, and because of the nature of how it's built and its historical, you know, value, I reserved the right, that's it, just reserved the right to be able to move it. And so we wanted to make sure that that was on the plans. So nobody would say, well, wait a minute, what are you using that, what are you doing with that house? You said you're knocking it down. It could still be gone, I have all the permits in place to do that, but I wanted to reserve the right. So hopefully that answers that question for Mr. Bond.
So, so if you do reuse it, it would be used for storage, or like an office or living?
Oh, no, no, like a building, like, you know, probably an office, or something would get added on, you know, it'd be stripped.
Gotcha.
The roof would be, you know, redone, and the main part, the back is just falling all in, and the sides falling.
The center of historic piece of it, yeah.
It's nice, you know, it's, and I kept looking, I'm like, well, gee whiz, you know, there's a lot of different things about it that are kind of nice. And it's, it's good size, and it could be added on to, right? And it'd cost a lot to buy that wood. So, I wanted to just reserve the right, that's really why we did it. And as far as Mr. and Mrs. Ferris, worked gladly with them in the past on, as far as the original planning, they, I was asked to make sure that I met with them and talked about a fence and some trees. And we had originally planned putting some trees on my side, but the engineer basically put them where there was gonna be like a building later, so that obviously didn't make any sense. And then I did talk to Mr. Ferris about putting in a fence, and it was actually supposed to go meet with them probably next week, I called them before the holidays, about the trees, I'm actually gonna give the trees to them as long, and I haven't had the conversation with them, as long as they want them. I was gonna plant trees on their property, adjacent to the fence that I'm putting up, on the side. I understand now the concern they're raising, which is, what are we doing in the back? There's no plan, and the issue of, of buffer, we just, I mentioned when I came up, I think that's a very important consideration. I mean, sixteen feet tall, probably not doable. But certainly, as I said, I could use some of these earth products to start to create this berm, and this could begin to mature and protect their property sooner rather than later. And I'd be certainly willing to commit to a discussion on what that would look like and how to, you know, make them all happy. I think that's important.
Yeah, I, I think I would like to see that as part of any plan that includes clearing, especially behind their property.
For sure.
And the same with any of the other butters.
Mm-hmm.
Presumably would be essentially the same thing going behind all of them.
Yeah.
I also really question just, you know, I, I can see, you know, if you're relocating the house, that, that starts to take up some of the space that would have been used for storage under the old thing. So that, that, I, I appreciate wanting to save that. I think saving historical buildings is a great thing, and I want to commend you for that, for even considering that at this point.
I agree as well, yeah.
There's only one place I can kind of put it, it's like that flat spot over there where you want to put dirt, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it also is right in the middle of what clearly would be a stockpiling area if you weren't keeping it under the old plan. So I can see wanting to extend the space you're using. I, I just don't see the justification for just going ahead and proactively clearing out everything at this point when, when we don't have that other plan yet. It really feels like you're just trying to save money by getting your, your land clearing contractor in there once instead of twice.
Yeah.
And that, that's what frankly feels like to me.
It's more, he's gonna need to fill on the other side.
Exactly, and then I'm gonna haul it all out, and then haul it back in. That's exactly what it is. It's, it's not, the tree company is like, you know, we're talking three grand.
You might have to, you might have to get creative in how you, how you approach it.
Yeah.
Stockpile your material in an area, you know, get one ready, and then you might have to move the material a little bit, you know, but...
Or reduce the area to the, the areas that are lower that are gonna get filled anyways, and then that can reduce maybe the tree cutting, and I, I get it.
Yeah, it, it...
What you probably should have done is come with, with both of them, if you needed to, you know, work on that property, just to balance the two sites, you know what I mean?
You mean the cut to fill?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with you, I think that's an excellent point. I haven't done anything out there, that's why I'm here, you know?
I haven't been on, I haven't had my feet on the ground to look at it, you know, I'd get a sense pretty quick of what the cuts and fills are.
But the, the, the idea that it's gonna be like extremely visible from the street, I mean, the houses block it, the trees are in kind of a knoll, yeah, you're gonna see the larger pines, obviously, but if we, you know, concentrate on the idea of the screening to protect the neighbors, that in and of itself is gonna protect their vantage point, it'll also protect anybody that's looking through from the street. And I, I, Michelle asked me, I was all approved to start, I could have started work, you know? But I didn't, because it, once this issue came up, it became clear, I should go back to Conservation and talk to them, and I should talk to you guys before I just go out there and start cutting things down, and then people say, hey, wait a second, what are you doing, man? You know, so that's, that's really why we're here. Oh, um...
Yeah, you asked about the materials.
Yeah, yeah, he asked the question about, about, Mr. Bond did about the, the materials. So, yeah, it will be materials from the site, you know, the subsoils, the loom. And he's correct, it is a fill site. So any types of materials that as you're separating, or stripping, can be separated off the rock in the boulder, right? That can be put back, or any types of fills that are mixed in at different elevations, that can be reused on the site as part of the fill, will be set aside to, to go back into certain areas over the recharge areas and stuff like that. But, you know, this is just such a vast area that we have to get all those deleterious materials out of there first. We'd like to keep them in separate piles, so it's more manageable in terms of when it goes back.
So you can reuse your loom.
Yeah.
So you're digging out a fair amount where the new, for the, like, the foundations of the buildings?
Mm-hmm.
That's where a lot of the material is coming from.
Correct, yeah, because the building is so massive, the whole thing is all loom and subsoil and the stumps and stuff, and you gotta get the stuff out of there, you know? So that is, I hope that answers your question, I don't know if it does, but that will be the materials that we stock by the, in terms of quantities, he asked quantities. If you basically took a, you know, a swath of three fifty, two fifty by three, you're talking sixty-five hundred unswollen yards, ten thousand yards. You know, so if that was six feet tall, in terms of what you think you're looking at, it's half that, right? So it's one fifty, one twenty-five, six feet tall. If you look at the topographical of the site, it's gonna disappear into the low spot, you're not even gonna see it. If it's dozed out on a plateau, and it goes flat out into the low area, you're not even gonna see it. And I'm all for doing the screening, getting the screening going now. I think that's smart, it gives them more protection sooner rather than later. And I understand this is just an opening meeting, we're all having discussion, and I'm, I'm glad to have the feedback.
I I'm, I'd like to understand more about any, you know, about the the tree, trees that you wanna cut. I'd I'd like to really have a good sense of what that would be. I I struggle with it, to be honest with you. It's sixteen months, stuff happens with the economy, things that, you know, I just, it's a big change from the plan and.
Would be nice to see the tree plan and see what you're taking out and what.
I totally get where you're coming from. But to change this other piece of property before it's permitted so, you know, so drastically is just a lot to put on the neighbors, you know?
I got it. Makes perfect sense. I hear you.
Yeah, I I would think at the very least, we should send you away tonight at some point and before you come back, I would like to see that the buffering plan worked out with the neighbors to show what and have that on the plan. So it's not a, so we don't say based on a condition of you're going to do X, Y, and Z, but have it actually on the plan, already worked out with the neighbors. And it it the the part that you're actually clearing at this point, it just, it seems like you're going back way too far at this point. You know, I I see it appears there's a existing rock wall. You know, if we would say not go, you know, that might be a logical limit at this point.
Natural buffer, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and and I can see, you know, I I understand you're digging up a lot of 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 material here. You wanna separate it and reuse on site. It's a reasonable request. But it it's also a lot of clearing.
Yep.
Could do unit one and stockpile material where unit one B is.
Another question I have is.
Know you need it over here, but.
Yeah, I I would be, cause that's like so close to the wetlands right there.
Later if you gotta, I know it's, I mean.
I'm trying to stay away, really, I am trying to stay away from the wetland and that's like right on the edge and the schools right there, so. And 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 the trajectory of the visibility from the school from that vantage point is actually more dramatic than over on the other side where it's kind of in a hole.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the stockpiling's a problem. I think it's clearing all the trees.
That's what I'm saying.
Which is the issue.
The site's gonna be disturbed. You can do what you, you can do what you gotta do during construction within reason to to get your work done. But, you know, taking all those trees down in the next one without having approval.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep.
So you might have to get creative in how you approach it or whatever. I'm sure, you know, that's what you do.
Yep.
Another question I have, when you're doing this work with the the separating the materials, are you talking about rock crushers and things? Cause some of the, some of the equipment that can be used in that, as we've seen with Village of the Americas, can be very noisy. It can produce a lot of dust. And we've had a lot of problems with some developments because of both of those issues. Especially with the noise being next to the middle school where you've got students who are trying to learn. You know, we don't wanna have, that's something, that's a discussion we're gonna need to have.
Sure. I don't think we would violate the lot line decibel requirements. I think it's what, sixty-five at the line?
Are you thinking, are you thinking you're gonna have to crush on the site?
Well, I mean, it's probably gonna use some boulders. I'm not gonna sit there trying to make dirt though, you know what I mean? But, I mean, the only thing that we would break down would be we would hammer the boulders and probably whatever there is of sixty-five hundred yards of strip, maybe fifteen, twenty percent. And at that point, it might not even make sense to bring a crusher in, right? Might just load it out, might bring Tresker in, put it in their trucks. I don't know, but I would want to have the ability. But I would absolutely say it's for this much time because I don't need that much time. If it's three or four thousand yards of rock, if it was fifty percent, it's two or three days. Right? But if I'm making something in the end that's twelve bucks and it's costing me four, I'll do it. Plus, I don't have the export. Right? So and it makes sense we're reusing the materials on the site. But I would absolutely agree to some sort of a timeframe. You can't be sitting out there crushing for six years.
Yeah.
I get that, yeah.
We'll want some some controls on that and and the dust is is also a, something we'll definitely want to.
We use water.
Yeah.
Yeah, we use, we have a watering tank and we spread it.
I'm raising this issue because we've had problems with other developers. I'm not saying you'll be a problem. But we need to, you know, cross our I's and dot our Ts.
I got no problem with it. It's fine. I have no problem with building, you know, something that's reasonable. I'm not saying that I can commit to sixteen feet or twenty feet, but I'm saying that I absolutely believe and I've backed it up by what I've done on the side lot line in agreement with them. And of course, you have to try to work with them, right?
Yeah. I'm not trying to to say what what the numbers and details are and just just wanna bring the issues out now at the beginning so that by the time we get to to something that we're ready to deal with, that we're all on the same page.
I'm with you.
So.
If you have anything else.
Do we have anything else tonight on this? I think I think we should probably continue this. I I think you've got an idea of what work you need to do.
I got homework.
Yeah.
It's all right. That's what I expected.
Yeah, no, it's good.
It's how these things work. There's no problem. I'll be in communication with them. I'll get some plans going.
Yep.
Get into the office and then.
Yeah, the worst, the worst part would be to send you away with you not knowing what you're supposed to do and that would be bad.
Right.
So, okay.
I think this is very productive.
So when should we continue this to?
When would the next one be?
Yeah, we're pretty busy. We're pretty busy on January twenty-fifth. We're pretty busy on January twenty-fifth and that's only two weeks away.
I'll be ready then, assuming I have time to read it down, but if you can't, then you know.
I think February eighth would be better. And what do we have on February eighth? We just did all the streets February eighth, right?
Does anybody wanna do a walk on the site? Cause I'll make myself available to walk the property with any, and I'll come back with some video, you know, so you guys, if you don't wanna walk around out there, I mean, it's not that much fun.
You know what, I'll I'll take a walk around it. Is it all right if I just go take a walk around?
Whatever you wanna do. Have at it.
It's fine.
No problem. Take the plans. You, the boundaries are all in, so it's easy to see right where the the twenty-five foot is.
Cool.
Yeah, have at it.
Okay.
If Mr. Green comes out, just say who you are. He might come out.
All right.
I don't know if he's there right now, but he's there. He might get a little. Yeah, might get a little, yeah, he might get a little nervous. I just say, whatever, con con.
All right, so February eighth at seven twenty, is that good?
It's cool.
Is there a motion? Didn't you this site plan modification review till seven twenty on February eighth?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose? That passes four zero.
Thank you, folks. I'll bring some pictures too, so those of you who didn't get out there.
Okay.
To clarify.
And anything that you bring, also send electronic copies to the planning staff.
Oh, yeah.
Just for the record.
You don't want, you don't want another full set. You want to do eleven by seventeens of the things.
I like this. This was great. Can you look at it?
So I'll need it a whole week ahead of time, so around February first.
Land's February first?
Yeah.
And where are the eight at seven twenty?
Yep.
Correct. Did you want tree locations on the plan?
Yeah, these are, these are excellent. You can actually see.
Talking about clearing trees, it'd be nice to see.
See where the trees were.
Yeah, I think you, I think we need to see, need to see, like, how do we do that with tree plans? Where we go out, anything over a certain size? How does that work, Preston? I know with tree plans and other.
In subdivisions, we say that if a tree is over a certain diameter, we have a, we have them all inventory.
This is not subdivision, so we wouldn't be.
This is not, but we can still ask for that.
Whatever.
A tree inventory?
I mean, that's that's like a three or four thousand dollar thing. Like to get a guy to go out and label every single tree and measure the diameter. I mean, I'll take the pictures if you want. I mean, that's, it's, it's probably even more than that.
So, I mean, I mean, I'll I'll certainly get out and try to, you know, take a look at the site if I try to to go. But, I mean, if you could just get very, as specific as you can without doing the three or four thousand dollar thing, I mean, we could really, you know, on the map, like this chunk, this chunk, you know, give us a, give us a pretty good sense of like what's gonna disappear.
You put in boundaries so you like you can see the lot line pretty much.
Yeah.
So I think the lot line against them is there, but I can have that put in because it's gotta go in anyways. Actually, I'll do that. I'll have that lot line put in because if I don't put the lot line in, then you're not even gonna probably have a difficult time. You'll have to be running scale rules. Is it, is it one down? To run that lot line behind all their houses, up to the corner of the road? I'll sort that and let her know so that you waste your time going out there till you know it's there.
Yeah.
And I'll come back with some pictures.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, we have an approval not required. I believe that has been withdrawn.
Yeah.
Is that correct? That there were some issues with it? So it's not, it was on on the agenda because we anticipated and it didn't happen. We have a bond reduction request for Signature Estates Two, also known as Royal Colony Road.
Correct.
Do we have a, normally with the bond reduction, we get a estimate from GCG or the likes of
Yes.
what it's gonna cost to, should the town have to finish up the punch list?
Right.
Royal Colony, is this the the one that Fafford was doing?
Yes, this is Fafford.
And they didn't plant the trees for the lady that they said they're gonna plant till like seven years later? Now they want a bond reduction?
Yes, I would say this is, yeah.
We dealt with this a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago and there was, yeah, and they were talking about that little strip of land that was, is it their part of theirs and the street and all that?
It's like this tiny, tiny strip of land on the edge of the property.
Yeah.
And they wanted something done.
I think it is.
I remember it.
It should be in your notebooks.
Yeah, I remember it.
Yeah.
They submitted, we have reviewed, GCD, GCG has did a punch list. Then the Fafford Company put a price to the punch list. And we have a new staff person who does plan review and DPW. So he he was comfortable with the prices, although he asked for a twenty-five percent contingency put on top.
Yeah, that's, that's fairly typical.
Yeah, we could even go higher, cause it is the, I wrote it down. The bond is a hundred and eighty-five thousand now and they wanna reduce it to a hundred, to thirty-two.
I'd say with them, I say we keep it higher than lower because.
Do we have to reduce their bond?
No, no, but the the bulk of, a lot of things aren't done. We did have a hundred and eighty-five thousand. But we don't have to.
The the legal justification for the bond is that it protects the town in the event that the the developer fails to complete what they have committed to do for the future public.
They haven't shown to be very good at that.
I I would tend to agree with you.
So. Why would we reduce their bond?
Because they have done a lot of the work.
Yeah.
And there's less to do, so.
But there's certain milestones that require us to reduce the bond, right?
Generally, I I don't know from a legal opinion what our legal requirements are, but I know in my experience on the board, how it has always worked, the developer says, I have this bond and it covers these items that I said I was gonna do. I've now done three out of four of those, so we only need enough bond to cover that fourth one. And so we typically, and the amount of the bond should cover the town's cost to do that, which is often much higher than the developer's cost.
That's why I would say keep it higher rather than low.
It covers, we also usually cover a unexpected contingencies and two years of inflation on the assumption that, you know, it might be more expensive in a year or two when we actually go to get this money.
And and there's no, there's really.
Staff notes, I'm sorry, you go ahead and then I'll go. Sorry.
I was gonna say, there's no percentage, like they're fifty percent done, so we're gonna get fifty percent of the bond because some of the end stuff could cost a lot more.
Right, well.
So it's based on actual
It's act, yeah.
cost of what they still have to do.
Yeah, we have a consultant go out, look at the, look at the, what they've done.
And what's left.
And review the the punch list of what was said last time, compare that with what they see on the ground now and what the developer has said and see what's really left to do, how much it should cost.
But my tendency would just be keep it high because the way things change and as long as it takes some of these people to do stuff, I mean, inflation could be way up by the time they get it.
They've shown a, they've shown kind of a a pattern of not living up to their end of the bargain on things that we've agreed to them doing.
So it's not, it's not to punish them for that. It's to cover what they haven't done.
That's not what I'm saying, but.
Yeah, so we need to make sure we keep enough to cover everything.
The staff notes, the staff notes here, you know, there's a wide range amount of work that might need to be fixed. Might be needed to fix the bleeder line blow-off valve, you know, and they gotta dig it up to show DPW. So, I mean, there's enough, it seems there's a, there's a little bit of fuzz around it, so I, you know.
Motion to deny lowering their.
I I appreciate the sentiment, but I I think we probably legally need to if the, if we can't, if if we can't justify.
Comments right here, I mean, to me in the staff notes, Preston, DPW, you know, there's a wide range of amount of work that might need to fix the bleeder line blow-off valve in case Fafford did not do it properly. They say they did, but they need to dig it up to show DPW. And there's been a slow process on the subdivision. DPW asked we add a percentage contingency on top of the total new amount. I mean.
We don't even know if what they did is is correct yet.
Right, well, that's why they wanted the twenty-five percent on top of.
More than that because that could get really, we don't wanna pay for that.
Right.
Town doesn't wanna pay for any of that.
If this, if this gets done, if the work gets done, then, you know, next meeting, let's, you know.
I don't know what the, the, the part that they are, say, has to be dug up to show. I think we should do the bond reduction on the assumption that that has not been done.
Correct.
Of course.
Right.
Not, not on the assumption that.
Need to be fixed.
Is there a way that we quantify these amounts though, or?
Well, so they, they said.
So if there isn't and they haven't proven to to.
And did our guy come up with the amounts or did they?
Their guy came up with the amounts. Our guy concurred, but wanted a twenty-five percent on top. But we can double it on top.
I I am, I am nervous about the the work that is only, that we haven't verified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am, and I I don't feel we've got a good enough handle on the cost because.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I I'm, I'm a little surprised that we don't have our external consultant doing this. Is that, is that a new standard way of handling this in the town? Or is this just something that?
We just did, yeah.
Yeah, I I think we need our external consultant to review this.
If, we need our own numbers at least. And then pad that because definitely don't wanna get stuck doing any of this stuff.
Yeah, I I think we need our own consultant to review this and we need to operate under the assumption that anything that's not proven to be done
may not be.
and done properly is not done.
Right, absolutely.
My only comment, my only comment on that, Preston, is that costs the town money. I mean, at the end of the day, get the work done, have people in town sign off, we can release the bonds. I mean, that's.
No, no, if 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 the consultant goes out there, it, the payment of the consultant to go out there is on the applicant's
Got it.
budget.
Right, so we can pop it.
They have, it it goes under their like inspection fees and such.
So we send our independent consultant out, the applicant pays for that?
Unless the applicant says, don't send the guy out, and then we don't do the bond reduction.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of times the applicant does some math and says, well, the bond reduction will save me this. The inspection guy costs this and the numbers are the same, why bother? You know, so, but yeah, so I think we need to tell them, the planning board needs to get numbers from our consultant.
We'll do that.
And does that, okay, they said the valve might not be right, so now DPW has to go dig it up? Is that like, are we paying to go out?
No, 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 they're gonna dig it up. DPW will be there to inspect it, to see.
Just wanna make sure we're not, like, they just covered something up and now it's gonna cost us to go check it in.
They need to, they're responsible for showing it to us and then fixing it.
It sounds like they failed to. It sounds like they failed to either take video or have inspection done while they were putting something in.
Yeah, they need to remove a bleeder valve. When they were connecting the water line.
Oh, for their water service, okay, so they had a, they pressure tested it and they had a valve
Yeah.
that they attached a compressor to to test the line.
Yeah.
Right, and we don't have confirmation that, 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 that was removed properly. And so they're gonna have to dig it up to see it.
Well, if that water line is, uh, if there's a problem, that can get very, very, very expensive to locate, depending on how long of a run it is, to locate and, and diagnose what the problem is.
Right, although as of now, there isn't a problem, but yeah, I don't know where that line.
But that's an unknown.
So it was tested in the past?
Yeah, so, that's why I, I think we need.
Yeah, passed everything.
We, we need our engineer out there to review this, who knows what he's doing and, and.
So they just have to dig down to the corporation on the pipe and disconnect it and
Right.
town else to see that that's not leaking.
Make sure it was done right.
That's out.
Right, so I wanna clarify, do you, we want to, we just wanna know a price of how much that can cost because they're not gonna look at it now, they're not gonna look at it until the spring.
Right.
Right.
So we need our consultant. So we need to be covered for that just in case it's done wrong and they have.
We need our consultants to get numbers for the, for all the work remaining, including the assumption that anything that's not verified is not right.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and like to have our own numbers on some of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's what our consultant does.
Okay.
Right, right.
Our own numbers.
And then, and then as long as they take to do a lot of stuff, inflation could account for a lot of extra money too, so.
Adding contingency and inflation is, is standard as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
What are we gonna do?
I think we've given direction to the planning director, how to, uh, work with the developer to and our consultant to get what we need to do before we can proceed on this.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, reports, uh, from the town planner and board member's status on complete street program?
Oh, yes. Let me look at my notes.
Anything, Josh? Got anything, Josh?
Not particularly.
Okay.
Complete streets, we have engaged, um, so this is complete, to just back up. Complete streets is kind of a concept of making the streets available and accessible to all different users. And Mass, Massachusetts Department of Transportation has a funding mechanism where if we participate and submit a, a plan of, they're usually small projects, under four hundred thousand dollars and smaller, to improve the streets, to make them more accessible. So they're sometimes fixing crosswalks and making them accessible. They might be pedestrian flashing lights, they could be a bike path, it could be a, you know, a connection of a bike path, um, sidewalks.
So are we gonna do this, uh, to get a portion of the work done that is the downtown project or as far as like
It probably won't be part of, yeah, but m- more on other parts of town, not necessarily in downtown. Because these are supposed to be small, sort of, usually standalone projects that could make a better connection for pedestrians or bikes, or even trains, freight, anything.
Does that include like putting sidewalks in on one thirty-five where those kids have to walk every day?
Along, right.
There's a stretch across down there and there's kids and there's no sidewalks.
Right, right, that, that's the kinda thing they'll be looking at.
By the mobile station over up in that area, there's, and there's, they stream down there and they've done some of it. Hockenden's done a lot of sidewalks there.
Right.
And then when they did Franklin, that corner, they added some in, but there's still strips that, and a lot of kids walk
Right.
through there, so.
Yeah, there's a big focus on, yeah, routes to school.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, so this is what this will look like.
Yeah, that's, that's a small geographic area, so making it walkable is pretty cool.
And who decides all this stuff, is it? Yeah. Who's, who's, who picks these things out and decides to present them or try to get the funding?
So what happens is we, we received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to come up with, they call it a prioritization plan, which is sort of the list.
I can do that.
Yeah, I know, but we already hired Green International to put together this list. Um, and so they're gonna do windshield surveys, they're looking at, um, data. They're, they, um, will then come up with
You need social media?
Yes, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna post, um, I think they use Wickham, what's it called, map.
They have any meetings or town discussions or anything like that?
So this one, so they're gonna use social media and then, um, there will be a complete streets working group. And so if people are interested in being on that, um, you can submit information to me or to Yolanda Greaves, the selectman. And so that'll be a working group that's meeting probably only twice, maybe three times. Once soon, January thirtieth, um, and then later on to review the list. So, um, so now we get this list and then we submit it to the state to be approved. And then from that, so then, once that happens, then with each funding round, we need to pick projects from that list to then submit, and it's a competitive funding. So we're competing against all the other towns that are participating in this program. So it's, it sets us up to fix smaller.
You got my first suggestion, sidewalks.
Right, right.
By the middle school.
Right, so there'll be a big, uh, put, uh, you know, social media push to get those out. So I guess that's sort of the update, but if anybody's interested in participating in that working group, um, that will be meeting on January thirtieth, they should contact me or Yolanda Greaves.
Okay. Uh, okay, we have, um, scheduling.
Oh, yeah, I have one other report.
Okay.
Design Review Committee met, um, last Monday night and they have, they have changed, they're, they're gonna meet on the opposite Thursdays as planning board, as needed, but they're gonna stick to a set schedule so it's easy for applicants to hop in and get their time. So they're the first and third Thursdays, as were the second and fourth Thursdays.
Can I ask a question about the Design Review Committee?
Yeah.
So, um, their area of, I'll, I'll say purview, um, is, is that, is that in any way limited? Or, um, where is that, where is their sphere of influence, if you will? Is it generally downtown, generally downtown or like, is there a zone?
In, in the, um, the bylaw,
Okay.
it's, I believe it's specifically downtown of one twenty-eight?
So I should just look at the bylaws?
One twenty-six, yeah, one, one thirty-five downtown. And then there's a, a provision of something about buildings, that there's a third, there's a fourth.
Yeah, there, there's also, uh, downtown includes, uh, Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but it's also, um, any project that, uh, the planning board, um, refers.
And they're just given their suggestions or are they given binding stuff that we want this and we want?
They are advisory to the planning board, uh, which means
We take their advice.
more often than not, we take whatever they say should be done and add those as conditions to the site plan approval unless we disagree, which has happened at, at times in the past.
Okay.
But usually the idea is an applicant hears, design review says, you need to make these changes. Usually they make
The changes.
unless they're super expensive, they make the changes and it's all settled before we're even signing off on a plan so we don't have to incorporate anything.
All right.
Because it gets into the plans, which is nice. So, um. Go ahead.
Would Stone Park technically be, be part of the zone, uh, that, that, uh, Design Review Committee would have?
Funny you mention, because Josh was just talking about that today. That's not part of the downtown zone.
Got it.
But that's an important, that's a potential adjustment we can make.
A lot of things that can be done, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
A lot of, a lot of opportunities.
Because the planning board has the, um, authority to, uh, refer any, uh, projects.
We could refer it there if it's in that area.
Right, exactly.
So the, the reason, the reason for my question is because, um, there's a, a, a member of the DPW who, so this is like a staff report a little bit, who's come before the CPC, um, i- i- interested in seeking CPC funds to do some refurbishment, um, of the, some of the baseball facilities at, at Stone Park. And so, you know, um, he came, I think, in, in late twenty seventeen, we're kinda waiting for him to come back to us with some, looking to get some more information. You know, I think he's considering doing a formal, you know, proposal to us, but, um, I just was curious because I, I think the Design Review Committee could, you know, could potentially lend some good, um, you, you know, some, some good thoughts on Stone Park and kind of, kind of making that, uh, kinda part of the, the downtown, if you will, right? So, I just, you know, just trying to get a little bit of information gathering with you guys, but, you know, um, and to your point, we can recommend things to go before the, the, uh.
Yeah, if, if it's not a project though that would trigger a site plan review at the planning board, then there's no way to send it to the Design Review Committee.
Un, understood, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, uh, in other reports, I, I wanna inform the board, uh, that I've had some meetings on one twenty-eight Main Street. A number of residents had expressed, uh, concerns about this project to Carl Hackinson, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. And so he got together with the town manager and, uh, they initiated some meetings, uh, that I was invited to uh, with the developer, uh, to talk about some possible changes, uh, to the project, um, and some different incentives or, or things the town could do to, um, convince them to do so. Uh, those talks are ongoing, uh, it's possible that will delay, uh, some of the, the hearings for the planning board. Uh, I'd love to go into more detail, uh, but it wasn't on the agenda for tonight. And, um, it's really not something that, that, that I should be going into the details on at this time. Uh, but I did wanna let the board know that these, these discussions are ongoing and, um.
That's good because if they can come up with a better idea before they submit it, there's a few things.
Right, so, so, you know, talk about, you know, can we reduce the units? Can we, you know, several, several board members have talked about, you know, push the building back a little bit. Is, is some things like that, um, some other things that haven't been talked about at the planning board. Uh, financial things that are really mu, not the planning board's jurisdiction that tie in with all of this, um, so.
It's because they're, they're really trying to squeeze a lot in into that little tiny property there.
So.
Okay.
So that, just, uh, I, I don't want the planning board to, to hear that I've been having these discussions and not, uh,
We've heard it now.
not feel informed, so I wanna, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I'm also making it very clear in those discussions that, um, that I, I may have my own opinions as to what they should do, but I don't think the board is completely unified on, on what makes, will make this a better project. So I'm, I'm trying to be very clear that, uh, that I don't fully, that, that I don't represent the whole board. Cause, cause I, I know in our discussions, we've, we've, different people have said different and sometimes even conflicting things as to what they wanna see on that.
Preston, is that any other boards there?
Uh, this is not a matter open for discussion this time, so, uh, but.
Sheila, did you let Mike know he doesn't really need to show up?
Yeah, Mi, Mike, Mike said he, he wasn't planning on showing up.
Oh, right, okay.
Cause she said.
Yeah, really, I know.
We will call him and let him know if he needs to show up.
Yeah, really, I know.
Yeah, why, why don't you text him and let him know that we're wrapping up?
Right, I will do that.
Um, so the other, um, uh, administrative items, uh, scheduling, future meetings, public hearings, uh, do we have anything in scheduling?
Yes, here is the, um, proposed two thousand eighteen schedule. Um, it looks like, um, a February twenty-second meeting is not going to work out because that's school vacation. So I don't know if we wanna consider popping another meeting in, because then we'll go a whole month. Or we'll wait and see. My sense is we're gonna get busy, but I keep having that sense and then.
Never develops.
Yeah.
Till it does.
Yeah, uh, February is a short month, if, if we can squeeze, just squeeze that meeting out,
Yeah.
that, that's just the best way to do it.
Right, all right, we'll just kick it out, yeah.
Uh, we, we may need to evaluate what's happening in the fall, having both November and December one meeting months, but that's a long ways out.
Right, right.
Can I make one comment on this and please tell me if I'm just being crazy?
Yep.
From my perspective, could we flip the order, could we take the meeting date, put it on the right? Most people go right to left sequentially, so your, your end date is your meeting date, you've got
Oh, I see.
your furthest date, your furthest date is application deadline, your middle date is your new item deadline, and your final date is the actual meeting. We're trying to lead people to say, this is the calendar where you're gonna get stuff submitted, so.
Right. Absolutely.
So the application deadline is for new items.
It's like you're gonna have to come in and change that tomorrow, Josh.
Yes, yeah, so that we're trying to differentiate.
Wait, I'm sorry, new item deadline, application deadline, that's, I don't know.
Median date.
Yeah, so.
Median date is the new item deadline.
If this is something you're, you're providing to applicants,
Yeah, that will be.
you might wanna think about the phrasing on that, but.
Yeah.
Change those T C P.
I see what you mean, yeah, new item deadline, uh, yeah, submittal deadline, I guess.
What, what do you mean, can you specify?
So what I mean is, so if, if it's a brand new project, we, we need it, uh, three and a half weeks ahead of time.
So that's the app, that's the application.
That's the application, yeah.
So I call that like new item deadline.
Right, but per our discussions, we've been trying to get, for, for ongoing matters. We, we need, you need stuff ahead of time, a good week ahead of time to review. So I wanted to put a deadline for submittals of ongoing.
So continued, continued matter deadline or something like that?
Paperwork deadline or, or something like that or?
Continued matter or, like, new matter versus continued matter or new top, new.
Yeah.
Or material for existing matters?
All materials submitted.
Nope.
Right.
All, all materials submitted should be, or something like that, because.
Any new material for existing.
I know.
All continued materials.
Cause, yeah, so that's the, that's the Thursday rule, that they're supposed to have everything in the week before.
Yeah, and, and I wanna, so I wanna document it, memorialize it, so.
Yeah.
You could even say new requested.
Something good?
Yeah, I think so.
So, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, that's great, I, I think that's awesome that we have this, this is good for us ourselves to have.
Yeah, so we'll revise it.
I should have that.
See how long this goes.
You can thank Josh.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Swear, Josh.
Uh, we have some minutes?
Yep.
Oh, and there's a plan to sign.
Yes, oh, yes, it's right here.
Um, we can sign the plan after we adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that works.
Okay.
Before we get to that, do we wanna, we've talked about scheduling a working meeting to, to tackle, um.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yeah, because we're, time is marching on and I, I wanna get that on our books.
Either that or we stop the time from marching on.
I know, um, because town meeting is coming up. And so, I mean, this meeting can be an early morning meeting, maybe to accommodate, or, well, that doesn't work for you, or.
What?
I mean, it doesn't have to, we can, it could be an odd time.
Early morning like what, three?
That's right, you said, right, you said you leave at four thirty, so.
Because like again, I don't know what's going on with the marijuana stuff, but, I mean, now that the feds are gonna start busting people again, what's that gonna do to the whole thing?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Right, well, we'll still have to.
We still have to come up with something at some point. I heard, just because I heard this was on the news that in the next few months, they're gonna supposedly have this worked out with the state.
Yeah, I think it has to be, uh, Jul, uh.
July or something.
I'm gonna see, uh, say July eighteenth.
Yeah, something like that where they're gonna be able to start issuing permits and stuff, yeah.
Are the government looking for some taxes?
No, they're looking for some of the rest.
I don't know, it depends. Right, so that's something we'll need to decide when we wanna tackle that.
But we, we, um, we have a lot of different zoning issues to talk about, so.
Right, and we need to figure out which ones we wanna.
Do we wanna do an off Thursday?
Yeah, I would say, and I, I would say, and we should try to, I don't know, what, what time can you guys start typically? And in the eve, in the evenings?
Start the meeting?
Yeah.
Six?
Yeah, I see six is tough, yeah.
I, I know Mike has trouble.
Yeah, it's hard for me too, I, I'm commuting in and back out from Boston.
Yeah.
I am too, yeah.
Yeah.
We could schedule two meetings and make them short, like they're gonna be from eight to, eight to nine thirty or something like that and just.
I mean, I think we could do like a, I think, again, I'm just gonna voice opinion, you guys tell me.
Go, go right ahead.
But, like, I would say, like, let's do seven to nine, maybe two blocks of seven to nine. But my only ask is, um, I, I think we really should have a very focused topic. Like, we're gonna tackle this particular, um,
Issue in each one.
Issue and there's pre-reading so that we really are productive, that we really can get through some stuff. And I don't know if that works, I've never done these before, so you tell us.
Now, does it have to be a, how does it, does it have to be a notified meeting or how does that work?
Well, it's gonna, it has to be a posted meeting, uh, it's not, it, the intention is probably not to televise this meeting, but it's a public meeting where anybody could show up.
Show up and, show up and listen or show up and participate?
Show up and listen.
Yeah.
Show up and listen.
If people show up and participate, we're never gonna anything go.
There's no participation.
At least, at least, uh, in, in the discussions I've had so far, the, the initial plan, and this could, we can change this going forward, but at least for the first meeting would be a, uh, planning board and staff, um, ha- are having a working discussion on where we wanna go with the, the zoning issues. Um, if anybody from the public wants to comment, uh, they can provide written comments ahead of time that can be distributed to the board, but I don't intend to open it up for public comment at the meeting.
Yeah.
Cause, cause any ultimate change will get a public here, so people will get there and do.
Exactly, exactly, there'll be a process for the public
Yeah.
To have, to have their say.
Right.
Yeah.
But this working meeting needs to be about the group talking about.
If, if, assuming there's time, uh, it'd be nice to have not only the formal public hearing, but to have an informal pre-hearing before we've advertised it, if we wanna go outside the four corners kind of things, where, where every, where everything is on the table before we, cause once we go to the public hearing for the zoning article, we're really limited in what we can do. So, so having two rounds instead of just the one is, is better.
Right.
That, that would be my preference.
Yeah.
Get the public in front before we commit.
Two, two, two sessions with just us first, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
We have two working sessions.
Before we have the, yeah.
We have, we would have two working sessions on predefined top, predetermined topics. We would then have a, a informal public meeting to
Get comments.
To get comments on the things that we.
We wanna do the off Thursdays in February? It would be the first and the fifteenth.
First and fifteenth, uh, I think those work for me.
When's February vacation?
The twenty-second, that's when there's no, we're canceling the planning board meeting that week.
So we're no, no meeting on Sunday?
I might be leaving the fifteenth.
Where you going?
We, well, should we go with the first and, and then see from there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a planning board meeting on the eighth, Thursday, February eighth?
Yes.
Correct.
So we would be saying?
First and the eighth.
N- not the first?
Do we have the first?
First.
February first, yeah, so it's telling you off Thursday.
S- so you wanna have the working group on the first?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Meeting on the eighth.
So working group on the first, meeting on the eighth, got it.
And after the working group, we'll plan the next one from there, right?
Yeah, I guess so, maybe we'll have to do that. So, my proposal for the working group is, I like Joe's idea that we need to have a set topic, but I think the first meeting needs to look at all the topics.
And decide what we wanna start with and do and tackle, yeah.
Right.
Right, to tackle, cause that's, that, yeah.
Yeah, and then maybe we can, we can set up so we have a good handle on everything we're talking about after the first session and we can digest it and think about it a little bit and formulate our opinions.
Correct, yes.
And then come back and talk about it again and have like a, a good, a good discussion about it.
Yeah, cause like, we, we gotta be disciplined and, and come prepared.
Move it, right.
So, to be productive.
Yes.
And on time.
So if we're having a meeting on the first, um, I will commit to getting, uh, ans- uh, information to you all by the twenty-fifth, so, so that you can.
So you're saying, so, so, so the, the chair will determine the topics or how, how will that work, you guys?
Yeah, with staff help.
Oh, well, we'll.
Or staff will determine the topics and I'll say yes.
Oh, okay, oh, alright.
Well, yeah.
Alright, we'll determine the topics, okay.
Obviously, obviously, I think you guys are gonna.
Decide what we wanna.
Yeah.
I think obviously you guys are gonna focus on some of the things that have been, you know, that have come before as on zoning that have just, have been too.
I would suggest that any member who says, oh, we need to do this zoning thing, whether, whether it's something we've always been talking about, we might just forget because we're stupid.
Yeah.
Or if it's something we've never considered, send an email to Sheila, uh, and we can add that to the list of things we're gonna talk about on February first.
Okay, so the first is working group, eighth is a meeting, fifteenth is?
Potentially another working group, but we'll, we'll see on that.
Okay.
So we should all check our schedules and see if we can do that, so.
My, um, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We should decide on the fifteenth early, cause my wife's out of town, so.
Okay, we, we should decide on that at the meeting on the first.
Fine, fine, got it. And then we have a meeting, and the twenty-second's canceled, so then we're in March, right?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And then I'll get together with you to find out about the streets thing, I might wanna be on that.
Yes, yeah.
The dates, I don't know, you said January something?
January thirtieth.
Yeah.
Thirtieth, yeah.
Okay.
I might like to be involved with that a little bit if I can, please see, keep an eye on it and.
Need some of that.
We have minutes?
Alright, and then we have, uh, signatures for the two thirty-one.
Right, uh, we have minutes, I see November ninth in my folder, is that just, but it's not listed.
Oh, did I not pull it out, uh?
Uh, the agenda says November sixteenth?
Yeah, I think we approved November ninth, I must not have pulled it out.
November ninth is one that's, um, pre-town, it has town meeting stuff, so that, that should be approved.
Yeah, that's already been approved, yeah.
The only one I've got.
You guys need to do November sixteenth and the thirtieth, um, and then I don't have the fourteenth done.
I, I don't see the sixteenth in my binder, I, I see November thirtieth.
Oh, I see, I must have put, I think I flipped.
I have November thirtieth, and I have the November ninth.
Look, I, I think she printed the wrong one by mistake.
I think.
Okay, so we're just in the thirtieth time?
Let's do the November thirtieth.
Alright, we'll do the thirtieth, sorry, I'm, I apologize. November thirtieth, alright.
This was a long time ago.
I wasn't even here.
I know.
Do we have enough to vote this in if, if, uh, uh?
Oh, it's only three of us here.
Only two of us here that were here.
So the fifteenth won't work for me, just.
Okay.
Alright.
So you guys are the only two that were here for that meeting, is that enough?
It was Pres- it was not, yeah. Preston and Mike, uh, it says John, and Ja- John.
Neither one of us was here on that one.
Right, so you can't, I mean, you can technically, but we can, we.
We have to wait. Wait, I would wait just so we don't have to keep redoing it.
Yeah.
You were there for the thirtieth, right?
No.
Preston Crowe Chairman called the meeting at seventeen, Mike Moke, Vice Chairman, John Rossi Member and Josh Chase were present, I was not present apparently. And Dale was the one? No, I was Dale.
Oh, you missed it.
To be honest with you.
Steve Mike to do this.
It's, I was November third.
I knew two of us were gone.
You were there.
I knew two of us.
Yeah, it was John, John was there.
I know, I, I know I was not here at one point
Yeah.
For one meeting, but I don't recall which one it was.
You were, you were at this one and, but, there's two of five people that were at this meeting and only two were here tonight, so I don't think we can vote those.
I would wait.
Yeah, I'm here.
This, this, uh, this one includes one twenty-eight Main.
Ah, yes.
Let me check, says I'm in, I'm in.
One twenty-eight.
Thinking about, I don't remember.
That's the, that's December fourteen.
December fourteenth, so, yeah. Um, we don't have the December fourteenth minutes yet?
No, they weren't quite done.
Uh, let us put in the minutes for December fourteenth.
I got them back.
Uh, the times when you left to check the locks.
Okay, I will do that.
Would you like to see those in the minutes?
Yes, I will do that.
So, did, did you, did you hear that?
No.
Uh, I, I, the December fourteenth minutes aren't done, uh, but I suggested that she put in the minutes, the times when she left to check the locks.
Yeah.
That, that, I think that should be
That'd be great, yes.
Uh, included as, uh.
Can, can you catch me up on, on that matter, I missed that piece?
Oh, we voted, uh, you'll find the letter that Town Council, uh, wrote, and we voted to send that as the planning board's response to the complaint.
Got it.
So we, we had the option of making changes or, uh, writing a completely different response, and we decided that that response was a good response.
Timestamped video evidence of, of Sheila checking the locks on the doors.
Yeah, and is there a way we can just have Josh stand down there from now on if the meeting goes late?
That's right.
You could.
Centric, I like that.
Stand at the door.
You can always ask.
We'll, we'll hire Steve Morgan to do that.
Okay.
No, just kidding, um, uh, if we can't, if we can't laugh about things.
Well, he's already checking it, so.
So we're, we're good.
So almost done, for two thirty-one Pawn Street, I sent you all the decision, um, and then I have, I just had some editorial changes on, on the decision, uh, that's not the decision, that's Joe's, um, something that Joe needs to sign, here's the decision. Um, and I just added under the decision that it, it was, um,
Just, just to take a quick review.
Yeah, I didn't print out, those are the ones that the sign.
These are the actual ones to sign, but I just wanna.
So I, yeah, cause I sent this to you Saturday maybe.
Thanks Dale.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I, I just added a change that we've approved this plan, however, if conservation adds a revision, we still approve the plan with conservation's revisions on it, cause they have not entirely closed their hearing yet.
So has everybody signed a copy?
No, it, these are the ones to sign, this is just to take a quick look at it before we adjourn and then we can assign it, assign it after we adjourn, but if we need to say anything in a public meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you want me to, did you read it already, do you want me to print you out a copy?
No, it's okay.
Okay, okay.
You read it already.
I remember it.
Me too.
Yeah, I think this is fine. Alright. Okay, so shall we adjourn and then, uh, sign this, or any, any other member reports, anything else?
Take a motion to adjourn at, uh, eight past nine?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, that passes four zero, thank you and good night.